All right, so we are doing the follow-up video. Yay. One moment, please. There we go. So one of the lovely things about follow-up videos is I don't have such a time restriction, which is lovely. So that is part of the reason why, especially for those questions that were about the line spectra, why I postponed those really was so that I could kind of just take my time and talk about all differences in line spectra. I know that that's not what a lot of you all wanted, but that is makes my life just a little bit easier. Sorry, was attaching my tablet because I forgot that that wasn't attached because I'm at home because it is seven o'clock in the morning. So a couple of things on the procedures first. So are you allowed to bring bags into the exam room? So here's what I'm going to say, which is yes, but try not to. The reason why is because if folks come in late or those TAs or me, they are going to walk around and check all those IDs. And if I trip over your bag, everyone's going to be distracted, right? So the fewer bags we have in that room, the better because trust me, no backpack will stop me from walking through the aisles. Just, I would recommend not, but honestly, like I understand that sometimes the only bag that you have that'll holds your cellphone, your keys, your wallet is a backpack. So it's completely understandable that you are allowed to do it. But if you have another option, if you can travel lighter, I recommend traveling light. Because again, I will walk between those aisles and I will try not to step on your stuff. But that does happen. We had another question that was just about basically arrows. So if you need to put in arrows, understand that we will accept up arrows and down arrows. We will accept up arrows like that and down arrows like that. Anything really that looks like an arrow. This is one of those times where, just like we were talking about trying to draw those, those D orbitals in mine don't look great. We, we have a lot of grace. We have a lot of understanding that you're going to do your best. And my best isn't always perfect. So as long as, you know, good, good, honest trying. I had someone in my class yesterday because mine looked like this. Ask me what was up with seven and the letter L. And you know what? I don't blame them. Do not blame at all for being like, what is up with seven and L? Because that's kind of what my arrows look like. So totally fine. I did address this last time, but I'll go over it one more time. Realize that the exams that we've posted, they're just the old exams from fall 23. We do write brand new questions. We do shuffle all that around. So just keep in mind that really those are there because I like them for two reasons. I like them because one, the questions are in a random order. So unlike Alex, that oftentimes has like a great big title that says, let's do electron configuration. I know it says something like that, but or like electron configuration. These are in a random order. They're not labeled. And so that can be helpful for your practice. The other thing that's useful about them is really wording. And so that way you can see all the instructions. I've gotten a lot of questions about what the short answer instructions look like. And that way you can just see them. You can just see what short answer questions look like. You can see how we give instructions. And, and that a lot of times it just kind of helps people be a little bit more at ease. Because I will say this, Dr. Deekman is usually the one who's the most exact with his wording. And so those instructions do tend to read very similarly. Because Dr. Deekman is the one who's usually the most like, we have to make sure this is clear. And so usually those instructions are written by the same person. We all influence them. I've definitely influenced them in the past, but Dr. Deekman takes the first pass at those instructions. Um, this notion about all work on the scratch paper. Again, I mentioned this should just be aware that multiple choice have no partial credit. So if it's a multiple choice question, I don't care what you wrote on the scratch paper. Don't care. And that short answer have to go on the back of the Scantron. Short answer, go on back of Scantron. So again, I actually don't care what's on your scratch paper because the only thing that's going to get graded is what's on the Scantron. That's all. An question about points per question. So I I still don't actually know. So the short answer will be labeled. It's possible that the first exam last year was not a short answer. It'd be labeled. And then honestly, all we do is so I really don't know. So I'm going to put an example. We'll say that one question is four points. We'll say the other question is six points. Kind of make my life easier. And then the multiple choice. We take basically hundreds, we subtract the short answer. And that gives us some number. So in my example, which again, not saying this is for this exam because we take the remainder. And then we divide it by the number of multiple choice. So if there are 27 multiple choice questions, that makes each multiple choice worth three and one third points. But that's actually how we do it every single time. And so we basically start with the short answer points. And what do we think those are worth? And what would be to make sure that the short answer? Because short answer takes a little bit more time because you do have to write something out. We try to give those enough points to make sure that they're worth it. And then the multiple choice are worth all the same number of points, whatever's left over. So that usually is some really wacky fraction. That's, that's totally normal. Timer on the exam. So I, so yes, we give you guys a timer on the exam. The one thing to be aware of is, is that we are in, I don't, I don't remember what it is. Like seven buildings. I'm going to say we're in 13 rooms. And so this does also having a timer in every single room does rely on all the media working. And granted, we have a whole media team. That media should work, but realize that last year it actually worked the whole time. But there definitely have been times where like one room, the media doesn't work. And then what we do is we have whiteboard markers and we write the time on the whiteboard and call out and the TAs keep track. So we do our best because we definitely want this to be true. But understand with 13 rooms all across campus and five exam, four midterm exams and a final that we do our best and we want that to be true. But hopefully is true. Can we test you on noble gas configuration for the exam? Yes, absolutely. Noble gas configuration is great. I will just say if it's short answer, read the instructions. Read instructions. But in general, yes. Do we have to memorize? This was about the do we have to memorize? Let me just grab the chart because I think this will make a little bit more sense. Oh, it's already open. It's like, why isn't it changing? Because it's the one I already have open. They're asking about this chart here. And the, again, the short version here is that no, you do not need to know that yellow light is at about 600 nanometers. No, we sometimes will use that information basically for flavor. We'll use that information just because writing exam questions could sometimes be a little boring. We'll use that information so that you know that it relates to the real world. So sometimes we do go ahead and throw that information in there, but that's really just to give the questions context for what's happening. So we might talk about x-rays or UV light or red light or green light or yellow light. But all of that information is stuff that we would just put in the question that you don't need to know. So no, no, don't memorize ultra values of the electromagnetic spectrum. No, don't do that. Chemist names. So this was, I believe, in reference to things like Rutherford. And that's a no, but there are some that you do need to know. And granted, we usually use these in terms of the Bohr model. Though, but we, we call that the Bohr model technically that is someone's last name. Same game with Schrodinger. We refer to those again as a Schrodinger model. But for those of you that were like, well, they're not going to ask us about names. So I don't need to know Bohr or Schrodinger. Now we have a problem because we just refer to those as the models of the atom. So you should be familiar with the Bohr model. So yes. Or model of the atom. That you do need to know about the Schrodinger model of the atom. You need to know about, even though those are technically people's names. For this exam, I think that's all. Just because those, those are basically the two like big models. Because even, and to give an example, if we want to talk about the uncertainty principle. That does have a person's name associated with it, but basically we would then just use it. Can I spell Heisenberg today? Heisenberg. Notice that the uncertainty principle is the actually important part. And we'll go ahead and include the name Heisenberg because some people learn it as the Heisenberg uncertainty principle. And so sometimes the name can be helpful in remembering. But the uncertainty principle is usually the part of that that actually gets talked about. So we'll oftentimes, again, we'll throw the name in there because it is helpful to some people, but we're not going to ask you whose name is attached to the uncertainty principle. Even with the Bohr model and the Schrodinger model, we're not going to ask you whose name is attached to the model that looks like this, which by the way, this is poor. But we're not going to ask you to come up with that name for that model. We have better questions to ask. We want to know what you know about this model, not just the person's name. But we will use Bohr and Schrodinger to refer to some of those. Experiments like the cathode ray tube. And all of those. So here's what I told my class. I told my class that essentially knowing things like that electrons are particles, we also know that they're waves too. Are particles that electrons are negative. Knowing that the nucleus is dense. There's a bunch of information that came out of those experiments. And that's the part that's useful, the information that we know. So for some folks, this is information that they might have remembered from high school. For other folks, it's new. So just having basically kind of a description of what we know about the atom. That's the part of this that's actually useful. So you don't necessarily need to know how the oil drop experiment worked. But knowing that we know that electrons all have the same charge. It's a set amount, that sort of thing is useful. Rydberg, technically, no, we're not going to use Rydberg. We are going to use instead instead of Rydberg, we are going to use the Bohr equation. So this is a yes. But the Rydberg equation is a no. And you can actually see that again on that potentially useful information page that I showed off in the other video. It's in the 701 section. You have this equation and you also have the constant that goes with it. But you don't have the Rydberg equation, you don't have the Rydberg constant. So the, so if the question is, can we go from like n equals to the n equals one and give the wavelength associated? Yes, but you're not going to do that with Rydberg. You do it with Bohr. Length associated. Yes, can absolutely do that with the Bohr, with the Bohr equation. Okay, what's the uncertainty principle? Really the uncertainty principle, this is something that goes back to the notion that there is a wave property of electrons. And since we have a wave property of electrons, you can know some amounts about the position. And you can know something about the velocity, but you can't actually know both. Because essentially the more that the electron acts like a particle, which would be the position, then the less you are observing its wave property, and the less you are observing its velocity. The more you are observing its wave property, the less you can know about its particle property. So that's really the uncertainty principle. And honestly, it's just useful to connect the fact that electrons are both waves and particles. And that comes with some weird things like this. The fact that you can't know both the position and how fast it's going at the same time. So the uncertainty principle is pretty short and sweet. And again, just tied back to that notion of waves. Okay. Now comes a time where I have to do a little bit of cleanup on what I'm doing because I got stuff everywhere. And you would think that I would try to be more organized. But you know what? This is, this is me. This is, this is me. Nobody asked me any questions off of the fall 23 exam this time. I kind of didn't know what to do with myself. Okay, we actually did do finding an atom given the mass and a neutron. I did actually squeeze that one in there. Quantized and line spectra. Line spectra, what to know. Quantum mechanics. This one really sounded like somebody, I know my, my like hastily written down version is not always exactly what was asked. But that one, gosh, really sounded like somebody was reading off a question off of the the end of chapter questions that really sounded like an end of chapter questions like a, or a PLTL question. It sounded like that. What I'm doing is I'm basically making my list. And diamagnetic. One thing I do want y'all to notice, and you probably already maybe figured this out. But notice, like, like I just said, like, nobody asked me to do any questions off of the previous exam, which is fine. And that just means that I won't. There's lots of things nobody asked me to do. So therefore I'm not doing them. Already had diamagnetic on here. Yeah, diamagnetic. So just, just be aware that I really do exam reviews based on whatever people ask me for. And I don't come prepared with very much. So if there's something that you're like, oh, good, I knew everything in the exam review. That's great. I don't know if you noticed, but like I threw up this equation. Nobody asked me about that. So I didn't do an example calculation with it. But that is one of your equations on your exam and I would know how to use that. Okay. I'm actually going to do these kind of in order. So let's talk about isotopes. So isotopes. I like to think of these as all neutron options of atoms. So what I mean by this is when we have something like hydrogen and hydrogen is just really easy to draw. And we're looking at the nucleus of a hydrogen atom. You can have one proton. You can have one proton and one neutron. You can have one proton and two neutrons. And these are the three most, these are supposed to be hydrogen options. So this would be H1. This would be two. This would be three. And we consider all three of these to be isotopes. Because they have the same member of protons. They just have different neutrons. And notice that even the version of hydrogen that is quote unquote, normal, the one that is the most abundant, it's still an isotope of hydrogen. It's just the most abundant isotope. The most abundant one, by the way, is over here on the left, most abundant. So that's the beautiful thing about isotopes is I personally like to think about them like I think about flavors of ice cream. Like if I walk into an ice cream place I've never ever been in before, vanilla is probably going to be one of the options, right? Like some version vanilla ice cream, like it, it's very, very common, at least in the United States, to have vanilla ice cream in an ice cream shop. And just because it's vanilla, it still counts as the flavor of ice cream. Like even though it's the most common in the United States, it's the most abundant. It's, it still counts as a flavor of ice cream, even though it's the most common. So all of those count as isotopes, even though one of them is way more abundant than the other two. Yeah, same protons, different number of neutrons. We did this one. Then let's talk about the, these things being quantized, line spectra, emission spectra. So first of all, whenever you want to talk about this notion of things being quantized. Basically what we're trying to talk about is we're trying to talk about basically like packets of energy. Packets of energy discreet. Let me see if I can go ahead and grab a slide. It should looks like this one. So this is usually where this one comes from. So it does go essentially back, back to back on this. So the thing is, is when we talk about the electromagnetic spectrum and we can talk about here than the fact that I have light, but when I say light, and I'm going to use a visible spectrum for an example in here. When I say light, I've got green. And I've got blue. And then there's this middle part in here, right? And we could talk about all the different colors that are in there. And we could talk about the fact that there's, I'm going to not be great at this, but there's like teal and there's like sea green. And there is aquamarine. I'm not even sure which color that is right now. Marine, there's a whole bunch of colors in here. And so we get this idea that, that you have a spectrum of colors and you have a spectrum of light. The thing though, is, is that if I actually have light of any sort, the light actually comes as individual packets. So even though I could have all these different shades of blue and all these different shades of green, and we could question what really is blue and what really is green. When I actually faced with light itself, that light, no matter what it is, comes as essentially individual packets, we call those photons. When we're talking about light, those are photons. And so we can talk about one packet of light. We can talk about a single photon. And that single photon then has one energy. Because we can get it down to this notion that we can have basically one energy because we can have one packet of light. So this, this one packet thing. That's what we think about as being quantized. It's basically the opposite of the spectrum. Opposite. Essentially, is basically then you're saying that, well, sure, we can have a whole bunch of different ones. If I actually had light itself, light actually comes in unique individually wrapped packets. Not individually wrapped, but packets of light. So that's the idea of something being quantized. And that's kind of where that one comes from. So we can talk about that each one has its own wavelength and frequency associated with it. It's not just a smushy hand wavy thing. So it's, so not just continuous, but individual packets of light. What we then talk about from there. And this is again, where yesterday I mentioned the fact that we've got those pre-required lecture videos. So for those people that wanted more information, there is more information. So line spectra. Now this one, I'm going to use, I do want my picture because I think the picture is kind of helpful, but we need to talk about this thing. Because there's a couple of different terms and a lot of them are the same and some of them are different. Oh, joys. Okay. So this, as it says here, is a line spectra. So this is because we have electricity, so high voltage means electricity. And inside this tube is hydrogen gas. And when you put a lot of electricity through hydrogen gas, you excite the electrons. Electrons in hydrogen. And because of that excitation, because we now know this. So basically the electrons get excited and they go up. And then because they were excited, they come back down. And when they come down, you get energy out of these. And especially what we care about now is we get light out. So this light out, we refer to as the line spectrum. We also refer to this because it's energy out. This is also called emitting light. Which means this is also an emission spectra. So these are, so line spectra and emission spectra are the same thing. Because we're trying to talk about the lines given off from a discharge tube after electrons have been excited and they've fallen back down to their ground state. So as they fall, they give off light and we can see that light as an emission spectra. The reason why I still want to talk about these, those are those are still my emission spectra. Yeah, those are still emission spectrum. There is one other kind that we don't often talk about. But there is another, it's called the absorption spectrum. And the hard thing about this, especially for the tools I have to work with. Bear with me a minute. Gosh, we're going to just go reds. I'm sorry that there's really no orange. Will that overlap and give me orange kind of great? Green. Blue. So assuming that this was a rainbow, which I understand it's not rainbow. You could also have an absorption spectrum and the absorption spectrum would actually just have dark lines in it for wherever wherever electrons can absorb a photon. They do. And that light is missing. So you can also have an absorption spectrum where essentially you can basically see what wavelengths of light were absorbed by the electrons. So you sometimes do hear about those. Again, we have a tendency not to focus on those as much, but that is another term that you might have heard of, the absorption spectrum. It should basically match the emission spectra because it's the same, it's the same jumps. It's the same differences in between energy levels that are going to be reflected in both of those. So as far as what you need to know about them. This is where the sad thing is I've read all the exam questions now and I'm like, what is most important about this? There are questions on this, so it's, it's, it's worth it. I'm just trying to think of trying to break it down. I don't think I can break it down anymore. I think I just have to do the whole thing. Okay, so your line spectrums are coming from these interchanges in between energy levels. So there was an Alex question that asked you about differences in between energy levels. And part of this line spectra idea is the fact that you can have a transition. I'm just going to use these colors randomly, a line spectra in between any of these. Will give you different transitions. So each one of these then differences in between energy levels gives you a different line. Where I probably should have done them in different colors. We'll just number them, one, two, three. And so then if we were looking at a line spectra, we could have there's a blue one or one, there's a green one, I don't, and there's a red one. This is not. This is not to scale, this is not in order. Not to bother me. Okay, what's bothering me is the fact that the difference here has. So basically three has the highest energy, the highest change in energy, and then one has the next highest energy. And then two has the lowest change in energy because of the difference in between the gaps. So what is, what is bothering me is if I was really going to do this well, then my coloring is going to be off because highest energy, yeah, this is, hold on, I'm sorry. Sometimes I can use colors and I like it, and sometimes using colors means I have to do things a little bit more exact than I meant to. So three is the biggest change in energy, since that is the biggest change in energy, that should have the highest energy required. The highest energy required is going to have the shortest wavelength, shortest wavelength color I have is blue. Next up, I have to use green, the middle one is one. And then the last one is red. Sure. Smallest amount of energy, longest wavelength. Which is red. So now my picture matches, it makes me feel better. So each transition is supposed to relate to a unique energy, which can then also relate to its own wavelength. This is the reason why I have problems with the line spectra is not a problem, it's the fact that all of these pieces go together. So trying to say what's important about the line spectra, honestly, because the line spectra involves everything that we've done with wavelength and frequency and energy, it's impossible for me to separate them out. Right? As part of the reason why I went ahead and went back to fixing my color scheme is because I didn't want it to be like, oh, we can have different energies and it's not connected at all to the wavelength of light, and that's not true. Right? The energy and the wavelength of light are connected. And that is reflected in the line spectra, which is then reflected in these energy transitions, which then is reflected in the Bohr model, which is why there's, there's the Bohr model over here. Because the line spectra is basically where the Bohr model comes from. So light being quantized kind of leads us into the line spectra, that you can have unique photons, that that gets you also discrete photons. So that means that when you're talking about these energy level differences, they are also discrete energy levels. Don't remember now where I was going. This is also the reason why I was like, you might just want to hear the whole lecture again from scratch. Because there's not a shortcut here, y'all. There's, there's really not, everything kind of just goes together. So I'm going to say I did the emission spectra. I'm going to say I did the line spectra. So the hydrogen atom. There's a couple of phrases that we have a tendency to use, because whenever we talk about Bohr, Bohr works for one electron systems. So we have a tendency to just go ahead and use the hydrogen atom. Because technically. So the hydrogen atom is the only atom that's going to be neutral with one electron. So technically, we could do a different atom, but just only give it, give it one electron. But we, this is complicated enough as it is, so we have a tendency to just go ahead and use the hydrogen atom, because it's the only one that's neutral, but it only has one electron. So you often actually see us talk about one electron system. And for us, we usually simplify that a little bit further to just talk about hydrogen. We could talk about other electrons, other atoms, as long as we constricted them to only have one electron. But so oftentimes, and that's actually also why when I was throwing up this equation. It's actually what the z squared term is for. So z is the atomic number. But depending on how it was covered in class, because we're pretty much always doing the hydrogen atom. And I keep saying pretty much because the equation can work for other atoms, but for the purposes of this course and the purposes of your exam, we just use this for hydrogen. Hydrogen only has one proton, no matter how many neutrons it has. So z is equal to one, which means this equation winds up getting simplified to one squared n squared. Which means this does get simplified to negative b over n squared. So for people, so people may very well have learned it without the z squared term in it. And that's honestly valid for the purposes of our course, because we do have a tendency just to go ahead and do that with hydrogen. Okay, talked about the line spectra, talked about hydrogen. So this notion of talking about Bohr versus quantum mechanical model of the hydrogen atom. So some, some things. So we can basically have Bohr assumptions versus, I'm going to go ahead and put this as the wave particle duality. Do, well, that's really just told them. Nah. This should be underneath it. So this is going to be Bohr, I'll do this correctly. Schrodinger quantum mechanic model. Model, boom. So this word I didn't quite finish writing out is wave particle duality. So Schrodinger equation, the quantum mechanical model deals with the wave property of the electron as well as the particle property of the electron. The Bohr model dealt with the particle property only. Bohr also dealt with values of n, which also we have in Schrodinger. So there, but basically Bohr managed to do shells only. The quantum mechanical model deals with all of our lovely quantum, quantum numbers, all of them, all of them. The Bohr model really only works for one electron systems. Schrodinger equation, quantum mechanical model works for multi-electron systems. Bohr, because it had that notion of n equals one, n equals two, n equals three, we can draw it really nicely. But therefore thought that the electrons went around in orbits. And the Schrodinger, the quantum mechanical model is going to do this notion of shells, subshells and orbitals. Which also means that the quantum mechanical model is trying to deal with the electron density. And that idea of the likelihood, likelihood, I think that's how you spell that word, likelihood of where electrons could be. Electrons are slash could be. Something else that they have in common. They actually both explain the line spectra of hydrogen, both of them do that. Basically, the quantum mechanical model just goes further, because the quantum mechanical model can also explain things like electron interference patterns. Which the Bohr model cannot do. Been trying real hard to think if there's more things. This is the reason why. What else am I, let's see. That stuff, oh, standing waves, that's a thing. Sorry. Standing waves. So this basically is that notion of n equals one, n equals two, and no n equals 2.5. And really, standing waves are how we get electrons in atoms that therefore don't cancel each other out. Standing waves basically mean that all of the nodes, all of the ups and downs, let me go back to that picture. All, all the, any of the ups and downs portions of the waves are in the exact same place. That's, that's what a standing wave basically does for us. Schrodinger mathematical standing wave, good shape and energy. And great, give shape and energy for the quantum mechanical model that is also basically covered in the quantum numbers, because quantum numbers are n is how we talk about energy, L is how we talk about shape. Different energy gives different wave patterns. Again, we see that when we look at quantum numbers, and we talk about the different ones in there. Electron density, atomic orbital, darker region, higher density. Okay, I think I've got it covered. Okay. Oh, I'm going to quantum mechanical model done. This question here, the quantum mechanics. This was something like how to explain the transition of electrons in an atom using classical physics. You don't, is, is the short answer. So basically when we do talk about an electron being excited and I draw this arrow. The thing is, is that actually going back to this notion that there are standing waves. And electrons go from n equals, in this picture, n equals two to n equals, sorry. In this picture, we're going from n equals one to n equals three. The electron just moves to it. It just goes, it just is, because the electrons not traveling through 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 to 2, to 2.1 to 2.3, like there, there are no other energy levels besides one, two and three. But even so, even though I skipped over to, the electron just goes, that this is that weird thing, where since the electron is both a particle and a wave at the same time, as it changes energy levels, it goes from one to the other without traversing the other ones. And you can't explain that with classical physics. It doesn't work. This is why quantum mechanics is a separate kind of physics from classical physics. Quantum mechanics is not classical. Classic mechanics, classical mechanics. They, they aren't the same, they are not the same. And honestly, this is why quantum mechanics exists, is because there are things about electrons and light that we observe that classical mechanics does not explain. And that's the entire reason why quantum mechanics exists, is to explain and work with the features of the atom and the features of electrons that are true and that are observed. So this is another thing to keep in mind, is even as you're sitting there being like, but that doesn't make any sense. You know what? I agree with you, I agree, it doesn't make any sense. But that's actually the thing with quantum mechanics, is quantum mechanics explains how, what we observe electrons doing in nature. So it doesn't have to make sense, but it's what happens. That quantum mechanics is, is our best description of what happens in real life. Makes sense of it or not, it's what happens. That was my best shot at that one. Highly recommend you ask other instructors, by the way. Highly recommend you have somebody else take their, take their best stab at that one, because hopefully someone's better at that than me. All right, I got four more. Di-magnetic. We did not actually spend a whole lot of time in orbital notation yesterday. So I'm going to do a real slapdash orbital notation. Also, I am regretting the fact that I did not eat breakfast. As, as we go, we get low later and later. In this, nah. This is, there we go. Just wanted a periodic table. So to demonstrate this, I am going to go with relatively small things. So I'm going to do the notation for helium in black, and I'm going to do carbon in reds. So this is orbital notation. So helium has two electrons, I know because it's right there. I'm going to start low with one s and I've got two electrons, ta-da. Next up, I'm going to do carbon. Still start low, but I've got to place six electrons. So I've got one s and there's two of them there, and there's two s, and there's two of them there, and it's one, two, three, two p. And I've got four right now, I need two more, boom, boom, right there, two more. So these are the, these are orbital notations. That's what these are called, orbital notations. For those of you that are like, I thought this was electron configuration, electron configuration for helium would be one s two, electron configuration. So this is electron configuration. Electron configuration for carbon would be one s two, two s two, two p two. So this is also electron configuration down here. Yes, that just says electron config in my sloppy, sloppy handwriting. But so the arrows, arrows are orbital notation. The questions about diamagnetic and paramagnetic. In order for something to be diamagnetic, all electrons have to be paired. So this one is diamagnetic. Carbon is not, because all the electrons are not paired, this is paramagnetic. Now, the thing is, as you look at the periodic table, there are way more paramagnetic elements than there are diamagnetic elements. Because every electron has to be paired in a diamagnetic element. So even things we'll do just for the sake of arguments, I'm going to do nickel. Yeah, nickel. So yeah, we're going to do it, we're going to do it. Twenty eight. One s, two s. Two p. Three s. Three p. Three P. One, two, three, four, five, six, four S. And then finally in my 3D, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One, two, three, four, five, 3D, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So even nickel still has unpaired electrons. This, by the way, is two unpaired electrons. It doesn't matter how many are unpaired, as long as you have one, it still counts as paramagnetic. So it doesn't matter. Look at how many are paired. Look at how many. So we could also think about this and what you might notice is if I had stopped, whoopsies. If I had stopped at the four S, I would actually have something that was diamagnetic. So if I had stopped at calcium. So everything that's in the blue box would have been just calcium. That's paramag, that's, that's diamagnetic. So to be clear. If I take all of this, whoopsies, I meant to copy that. There you go. So if I go ahead and have a completely different set. This is calcium, this is diamagnetic. Because now every single electron is paired. Every single up, up arrow has a down arrow. All of them are paired. So I can have multiple diamagnetic elements. You just have to think about where they might be in the periodic table. They tend to be in places like 2A, it's going to be over here, there's going to be noble gases. So they tend to be places where everything can be paired. Those were, were every electron for every up arrow, there's a down arrow that is called diamagnetic. Diamagnetic when everything is paired. All right, diamagnetic. Last up, atomic radius, ionization energy, electron affinity. The fastest version of that. Here we go. So here's the game. Here's the game. This is the last thing we're going to do. As you go across the periodic table, as we go this way. And when I say as we go this way, I mean, we're going to stay in rows. Something I need you to keep in mind is as we go across, as I look at things like boron, carbon, nitrogen. What's happening here is I have five protons trying to hang on, protons. P with a little positive sign. Trying to hang on to five electrons and they are all in. They're not all in, but some of them are in an n equals one, but some of those are, but they're in the n equals, but three of them are in the equals two shell. Carbon has six protons. Trying to hang on to its outer electrons in an n equals two shell. Nitrogen has seven protons hanging on to its electrons also in the n equals two shell. Here's the thing. Even though, yes, there is something called shielding, which is where because you have multiple electrons that all have negative charges. There are conflicting, confounding additional complications. There is also this idea that I basically have five protons all trying to hang on to those outermost electrons. I have six protons trying to hang on to the outermost electrons. I have seven protons. So as my proton number increases, they're actually better at hanging on to the electrons. Since they're better at hanging on to the electrons. The nucleus basically holds on to electrons, I'm going to use the word tighter. I'm also going to use the word better. As you go across the periodic table in general. So because they're hanging on tighter, and this is the part where now I'm sat on my camera on, but I haven't taken a shower yet, so you guys have to deal with that. Basically, because they're hanging on tighter, you actually get a smaller radius as you go across. Because they're hanging on tighter so that nucleus, the fewer the protons there are, it's just not as good at keeping those electrons close by. The better it is at hanging on to its electrons, the smaller the atom becomes. You get a smaller radius as you go across. Now, keeping up with this same idea, because we're, we're going to go down and just down the columns in just a minute, but as we're going across the rows right now. To get a smaller radius as you go across. Now, one of the other things about this, though, is we have a different trend called ionization energy. Ionization energy asks how much energy does it take to remove an electron? To the amount of energy required to remove an electron. Technically, we usually have things like first ionization energy, which is to remove the first electron. And think about this now, as my atoms get smaller, this is going to require more energy. More energy required to remove. Because they're hanging on tighter. So this notion that as you go across, the nucleus is hanging on tighter to its electrons actually controls all the trends. This will also affect electron affinity. But the thing is, is that it seems strange because holding on tighter to your electrons makes the size of the atom smaller and requires a greater ionization energy. So the thing, so the trend that you see as you go across is you get smaller atoms, I'll put that back in black. You get a smaller radius. But you get an increasing ionization energy as you go across. And it's for the same reason. The more protons you have, the tighter they're hanging on to their electrons. So those outermost electrons are actually closer. The more protons you have, smaller radius. The better the attraction is between those electrons and the nucleus, the smaller the radius, the harder it is to pull them off of there because it's hanging on so tightly. So you have an increase in ionization energy as you go across. So if we're still going across and I also need to talk about electron affinity. Electron affinity, for simplicity's sake, electron affinity. Essentially, I'm going to put usually, I will point out where it's different, usually matches ionization energy. This is the energy released when an electron is added. Because usually, again, electrons are being held on tighter. So that attraction between the electrons and the nucleus is greater. Adding another electron is usually favorable when you add that first one on there. Because it's kind of like, yeah, this, like the right, the closer you are to the, the right hand side. The more that nucleus is like, bring it, I love these electrons, they're hanging around with me. And so if you add one more, it's like, yeah, I like this, hanging on real tight, I got this. So typically electron affinity also increases as you go across. Now, the reason why I keep saying usually is because this is the part where the noble gases are actually different. So the noble gases, this works with electron, with ionization energy. Removing electrons from a noble gas is really difficult in comparison to anything else in the row. Those noble gases, though, are so stable, they don't want another electron. So those noble gases kind of break the electron affinity trends. Because they don't really want another electron, they're super happy exactly how, ah, you're super happy exactly as they are. So they're, they're, they do not want you to remove an electron. So they fit the ionization energy trend perfectly. They're happy the way they are, so they do not want another electron. Don't care how small they are, and they are usually the smallest ones in the row. So they got all that stuff going for them, but they just, they kind of crap on the electron affinity trend. They break, they, they don't, they do not fit, there we go, they do not fit the electron affinity trend. Crap on it, that's not what I meant to say, that's fine. And honestly, that's part, so the, the noble gases not fitting in the electron affinity trend is one of the reasons why we tend to focus in class on ionization energy more because more of the atoms fit the ionization energy trend. All right, we went across, we didn't go down yet. We gotta go down, we gotta go down. We'll use a highlighter. Going down. What happens when we go down? So when we go down. We gain shells. Atoms get bigger. So as we go down, we get larger radius, we get larger atoms as you go down a row, as you go down a column, you get a large, you get a larger radius, you add shell, it gets bigger. Because it gets bigger and we're thinking about an electron hanging out in that outermost for ionization energy. Your electrons are so far away, so far away that your ionization energy decreases. Because the farther away it is, the easier it is to remove. It's farther away from the nucleus, it's farther away from that attraction. So your ionization energy actually goes down as you go down. Ionization energy decreases, which means so does electron affinity. Also decreases as you move down. So what you might notice is that in general, your electron affinity and your ionization energy go together as much as they can. Again, we talked a little bit about noble gases going across, that those are different. But in general, electron affinity and ionization energy go together. It's your radius that is going to be as far as talking about it will seem like it's backwards. Because your ionization energy decreases because you have a larger atom. So realize that these trends do go together, the rationale behind them, the reason they are the way they are, is all for the same reason. It's just the irony that a larger radius means that those outermost electrons aren't as attracted to the nucleus. And because they're not as attracted to the nucleus, they're easier to remove. And the atom doesn't care nearly as much if you give it another one because it's just so far away. So those things, again, they do actually go together, but when you say the trends out loud, they oftentimes seem like they're opposite, but they're all the same rationale go together. And I think that was the last thing I needed to talk about. We did increasing ionis, we did increasing electron affinity. We did ionization energy versus atomic radius. Oh, I didn't do MSL M sub L. Oh, gosh. Okay, I'm going to do this last one. So I'm just going to do an example. So this is that point where I am actually sorry that this question came in last just because I feel like people that have this question usually need follow-up questions. And all I'm really going to have time to do is do the, do this. The, the version that is concise is what I'm going to do. So here's the game, n equals three, when n equals three, there are three values of L. So these are the sub-shells in the n equals three shell, so this is my shell. These are sub-shells. I have an S, a P, and a D. From here. M sub L is zero and L is zero. M sub L, because we're always going from negative L to zero to positive L. So M sub L is negative one, zero, and positive one. Here, M sub L is negative two, negative one, zero, positive one, positive two. If I wanted to represent this in a different way, it would look like this. Three S. Three P. Three D. I have, I didn't do it the right colors. We'll highlight. The three is for my N value, my S is for my L, P and D are all for my L values. And then the number of blanks I have is for my M sub L value. So you can actually find your quantum numbers represented by your orbital notation. The last thing is spin, you only have two options for spin, we spent a lot of time on this yesterday. So that's why we have up and down. M sub S is positive one half or negative one half in there. Every single electron has a unique set of quantum numbers. So each individual electron needs to either be spun up or spin down. At this point, there are a lot of different ways to ask questions about quantum numbers, so please be aware that understanding them is not the only thing that you need to be able to do. I'll give you one example since I've written out the orbital notation. What if I asked you something like how many electrons in the n equals three shell have, and I'll just do this, and M sub S equal to negative one half. So I already have drawn out the entire n equals three shell, right, they're all here, I drew all of them out. And I'm asking you about M sub S equals negative one half. Which means I'm asking you, and you can argue with me that it could be the up arrow, I don't care. I was going to go and use the down arrow. So I'm asking you about everything in the third shell, which I have here, and then M sub S is equal to negative one half. So I'm asking you for all of these electrons. I didn't count them as I did that, but there's one from the S, there's three from the P, that's four, and then there's five more from the 3D sub-shell, so that's a grand total of nine electrons. So I used orbital notation to display quantum numbers. And honestly, anytime they're asking you things like, if I have these two quantum numbers, how many electrons is that? Personally, I recommend writing it out in orbital notation. I think it's easier to visualize which quantum numbers count for those things. Because it's a little bit easier when you make things visual. Yeah, so that's how this one would work. It's the n equals three shell, which I wrote out all of those already. So notice that I am taking into account, since I only had two quantum numbers, I have to assume that it's all the values of L and all the values of M sub L that would work in the n equals three shell when M sub S is negative one half. Okay, I'm going to go back to my list because the last time I went back to my list, I discovered an extra topic. Let's see if that holds true again. I did those. Yay, now I did M sub S on, it's about, great. So again, if you do have more questions on quantum numbers, I get it, like they require a lot of practice. Totally fine to want more of that. At this point, I unfortunately just don't know the best direction to go for y'all. So if you do have more questions, there are two more review sessions coming up. There's also office hours, there's peer tutoring, there's a chemistry clinic, so there is definitely help out there, please ask us. Also, the other thing I'll say before I sign off is, so yesterday I taught three lectures and answered questions afterwards, we'll just call that three hours. I did the exam review for two hours. Then I talked to Dr. Deekman and Dr. Anka about the chemistry exam for about an hour and a half. So yesterday I did six and a half hours of chemistry. I will not remember which questions I have answered when. So the great thing about that, y'all can ask me the exact same question and I will answer. So the great thing about that, y'all can ask me the exact same question and I will answer it again because I just can't remember. Who I've talked to about what. That being said, if you've already heard my first round of explanation and you need a different one. Also, just tell me, I will not be insulted. It does not insult me to be like, Dr. Taylor, you already told me that I need a different version. Just tell me, because again, I cannot remember who I've talked to about what. Anyway, good luck on the exam. Check out stuff in the seven oh one section. Everything posted to e-learning is there for you. Please go take a look at it. Good luck, y'all.